All right. I'd like to call Monday, January 6, 2025, City Council Meeting Minute to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, 701.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, a nation, their God, indivisible, seeing in justice for all.
It's been a while. Thank you. Okay, I guess we're gonna start with the Oath of Office. I'll start. I gotta come down.
I, Joseph A. Backus, do hereby solemnly swear, that I will, to the best of my ability, faithfully discharge the duties of Mayor, which I've been elected by the citizens of Scappus. I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the laws of the State of Oregon, Charter and the Municipal Code of the City of Scappus. So help me God. Thank you.
All right, on to the next. We have Oath of Office for Councilor Tyler Miller, Councilor Marissa Jacobs, and Councilor Joel Haugen.
I, Tyler Miller, do hereby solemnly swear that I will, to the best of my ability, faithfully discharge the duties of Counselor, to which I've been elected by the citizens of Scappus. I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the laws of the State of Oregon, and the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Scappus. So help me God.
I, Marissa Jacobs, I do hereby solemnly swear that I will, to the best of my ability, faithfully discharge the duties of Counselor, to which I've been elected by the citizens of Scappus. I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the laws of the State of Oregon, Charter and the Municipal Code of the City of Scappus. So help me God.
Yeah, Mayor needs a picture with his family. I'm his spokesperson on that.
It is.
Can do it.
Joel's done, I'll get a picture.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Reason I'm here.
Yeah, right? Yeah.
Just raise your right hand.
I, Joel Haugen, do hereby solemnly swear that I will, to the best of my ability, faithfully discharge the duties of Counselor, which I've been elected by the citizens of Scappus. Will support the Constitution of the United States of America, laws of the State of Oregon, and the Charter and the Municipal Code of the City of Scappus. So help me God.
And we would like to thank you for allowing him to run. Stacy, we would like to thank you for letting him run.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're moving on. Every odd year in January, we elect a Council President. Currently, Tyler took over a few months ago. And so every odd year, we do elect a new one. So looking for nominations.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Counselor Miller. I think he's done a good job in the few months that he's held the position. And I think he deserves a full two years to have that position.
Anybody else?
I second.
Anybody else interested in running? Okay, see in a first second, let's take a vote on Council President Tyler Miller. All those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Closed. Same sign. Thank you. Tyler, appreciate it. And now roll call. We are now all present. Besides Counselor Andrew LaFrance, he had an excused absence tonight. Everybody else is here. Well, moving on to approval of the agenda. If everybody had a chance to look at the agenda, I'm looking for motion tonight's agenda. For Jacobs. Motion by Counselor Jacobs to adopt the agenda as written. Any seconds? Second. By Counselor President Miller, any discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Was opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. This is a place of public comment. This is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for a public hearing. Members of the public address council are requested to give their name and city of residence. Please do try not to repeat questions to allow for more speakers. Speakers are to limit their testimony to five minutes. We are limited to 30 minutes total. We do have one here. We'll start with Alicia Heggies. Yes. I guess. Do you like to come up to the microphone and state your name and city, I guess? And for public comment?
Hey. You guys hear me okay?
Yes, NJ, can you hear that okay? I want to make sure the microphone is everybody online. So that's good. Perfect.
Yeah.
Hi, thank you. My name's Alicia Haggis of Scappus. I have a couple concerns tonight. First is that the City of Scappus is in a violation of a public records request. I issued a request December 2nd. There were, well, first issue was my records request wasn't acknowledged within the timeframe. It's by law. I had to send an email to the City Manager for that. And then, once records started to come in, there were parts missing. Then there were several records that should have been there that weren't. I reached out about that. Unfortunately, I guess the Police Department and I are disagreement or a misunderstanding of some sort. I believe that if there's a police response or an assumed threat, like police response, like a threat to a school, there should be a report. If a child is questioned at school because of report of a threat, there should be a documentation of that incident. I could give an example. I'm gonna try to, you know, respect privacy, you know, so I'm gonna try to be big. I'm gonna try to be quick because I know we have, you know, short amount of time. I only have five minutes. Well, I'm gonna back up just a little bit. I did file a police report on September 9th of my neighbor bullying one of my kids. And I spoke with Officer Flue Ellen, he Flue Ellen. And I did submit an email, and he called me within five minutes. Super responsive. It was great. He told me he was gonna talk to my property manager and my neighbor and get back to me. I didn't hear back from him. And within three days of that call, my son was swatted at the high school. And that incident was September 12th. That day, there was no police report for that incident. And so both of those days, there's no, no police report. I find that extremely concerning. Then, my son was also swatted again, September 24th. That's the only police report that there is. And there's missing chunks of it. And I reached out to the City Manager and Flue Ellen. And I disagree with statements I got back. I felt bullied by Mr. Flue Ellen, his response. I believe that if those other reports would have been there, it would have prevented my son from being swatted. I also, my husband and I, we wanted those fake reports. Wanted justice. You know, because that's a felony. Swat somebody like that. And in the report, it even said that the parent was upset that they didn't raid our house. And that the officer had to explain that that was against our constitutional rights. And the Police Department didn't feel that it was necessary to charge it against them and that, you know, it was justified. Because these rumors that had been spread about my son was justified in their opinion. And these rumors that had been spread, had been spread all from the previous school year in the school district. In my opinion, allowed it to happen because we had sent them emails and emails and had meetings with Superintendent about the issue and asked him what he was gonna do to address it. And we were never given answers how the problem was gonna be fixed. And ultimately, after the September 24th fake gun threat, the Scappus School District decided that my son couldn't go to school there anymore. They said he wasn't in any trouble, not any trouble, but he can't attend school here anymore. And that it was in the best interest for everyone. So there was some serious damages done from this. And we're looking for accountability. And unfortunately, we can't even get that because there's no reports. I mean, I don't know if there was just no reports ever made or if they're just destroyed or what happened to them. And I put a lot of trust in the Police Department here. I've been through a lot and this brings back to another point. My second thing that I wanted to bring up to you guys was
Let me just stop for a second. Let's just you do have another issue you would like to discuss. I'm gonna let you discuss that real quick. But let's just kind of start over now because this is a whole nother issue. And on that one, we'll, we'll talk with Ben and Chief and we'll see what we can come up with on that one.
There's one, oh, to wrap up on that, I did, oh, and the body cams, they told me that, I'm not gonna get body cams. I requested that. I asked again about the redaction and everything, and I've been ghosted. They won't even respond to me about getting the body cam footage of any of that. The City Manager told me that I'm gonna have to take it to the courthouse. So, I mean, I don't know how you guys would feel about that, but, I mean, I mean, my son's not even in trouble. I just want to see what happened.
Hey.
Yes.
Can you just explain from your experience what swatted means, just so that everybody here understands what you mean by that?
That there's a fake threat and it draws a police response to a location.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna give you five more minutes to discuss your other issue if that works, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll start it now.
The other issue was on September 29th, I got a text message on my business line at Scappus Massage of an inappropriate message asking for an illicit massage. And I called in non-emergency dispatch to report it. And so then, because of the issues that I was having with the Police Department, I requested to speak with Officer Barnes. Because he was the officer who had interviewed my son. I knew had happened, honestly, because I have a recording of the interaction that they said that didn't happen. Anyways, he seemed like a good officer at the time. Anyways, so I spoke with him on January 3rd to give my statement. And during that discussion, I was telling him that I wanted to press charges for commercial sexual solicitation for what was said in the text message. And I felt that the discussion was kind of combative. Like, I felt like I had to defend the fact that this person was asking for something illegal and asking for me to refer him to somewhere to do something illegal. And I felt like I'm trying to give a statement and I shouldn't have, like, he's not the judge, the jury, and that I should be able to just freely give my statements. And I just, I didn't feel it's kind of hard to explain. I feel like I would prefer to talk to someone maybe privately, a little bit more about it. But there was some discussion about the current Asian massage business that's open right now. And I was being questioned about the previous Asian massage business that was there. And I was being told that at the previous Chief Lugall watched the last case. And I don't even know why he was talking to me about Chief Lugall and the last case and asking me about it. But apparently, he had no idea about Massage Ordnance 910. And he was telling me that they have no power to go in there and close it down or do anything. And I am very confused as to why our Police Department isn't informed about the Ordnance 910 and isn't enforcing it. I personally went through a lot to help make that happen. And it was a lot of work for city staff to put that together. And I know that Flue Ellen was here when we all were working on that. So I don't understand why Officer Barnes didn't know about, I mean, like, he actually, like, almost didn't believe me that it existed. He's like, well, I'll have to look that up to make sure we're on the same page. And I'm like, like, I had to actually, like, felt like I had to prove to him that sexual solicitation is illegal. Like, I felt like I cannot believe that I'm having to argue this point with him. Like, I'm arguing this with a police officer? I, like, he's like, it's not illegal to do this through text message. I'm like, am I in the Twilight Zone? What is happening right now? It's in writing that he's trying to do this. He's texting a business. Obviously, he's willing to pay for it. It's a business. This is not a mistake. I mean, and he's like, I don't know, I don't know who this person is. I was like, well, I looked him up. I know his name. I know where his address is. He's in St. Helens. He's like, well, is that in my jurisdiction? I'm like, well, how about we call St. Helens? Why don't we send someone over to St. Helens? The sheriff can do it. He's like, well, we're gonna have to ask the DA if this is what, if it's actually illegal. It seems crazy to me. Is this, I mean, is that okay? I mean, this is crazy to me. Is that okay for people to get text messages like that? And as far as I know, I know other massage therapists in town are getting text messages like this. I feel like I'm being targeted because I say it's not okay for illicit massages in this town. I guess, I guess I have to be the spokesperson to say that this is not okay?
I thank you. I think we got the idea there. We will, again, I'll talk with Ben and Chief Flue Ellen and see if we can come up with something for you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment online? Joel's handing it in. Okay, moving on, we've got in a consent agenda today. We're looking at December 16, 2024, City Council Work Session Minutes. December 16, City Council Meeting Minutes and Reappointment of Teresa Keller and Rita Bernhardt to the Budget Committee. For a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Moved.
President Miller moves to accept. Any seconds? By Counselor Santiago, any discussion? None. All those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Closed. Same motion carries. On the new business, today, we are asked to we're looking at a proclamation to declare January 2025 as Blood Donor Month. So I'll read this real quickly. Whereas regular blood donations are a critical resource for local hospitals and health systems to provide life-saving care for their communities. And only 3% of the eligible U.S. population donates blood each year. Whereas the month of January historically is a period of critical blood shortages. Blood centers like Blood Works Northwest continue to face a decline in donor turnout during the holidays, with many donors failing, falling ill during cold and flu season. Whereas on December 31st, 1969, the President of the United States, Richard Nixon, signed a proclamation designating January as National Blood Donor Month. This observance is meant to honor voluntary blood donors and to encourage more people to give blood. Whereas the mission of Blood Works Northwest is saving lives through research, innovation, education, and excellence in blood, medical, and laboratory services in partnership with our community. As part of this mission, Blood Works Northwest supplied 95% of the Pacific Northwest blood. Whereas the City of Scappus has partnered with Blood Works Northwest to provide Papa blood donation opportunities at Scappus City Hall, where the community can give blood throughout the year to support local patients. Now, therefore, I, Joseph A. Backus, Scappus Mayor, do hereby proclaim January 2025 as Blood Donor Month and encourage all residents to give back by donating, volunteering, or giving blood. This life-saving work is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. It is this sixth day of January 2025. And they are here tomorrow? Here tomorrow. Not at 10:00 though, you have to come after.
You have to have an appointment already? If anybody wants to donate, they go to our Facebook, to our yeah, they go to our Facebook and then sign up there. Okay, thank you.
Possibly show up, but if they are having appointments first, those will probably go first. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Scappus 2025 Heritage Park Events Proposals. We've had three events. They have covered many days, from Earth Day to the Outdoor Festival to the Movies in the Park. And so here we have J.J. McKay giving us a proposal of going forward this year.
All right. And I'm also joined by Jeffrey. What a pleasant surprise. Thank you so much for making the time to hear and review the proposal that we have for the events that I put on for free and that Jeff puts on at a loss with the library. And, you know, special thank you to Mayor Backus, Tyler, Kim, and Jeanette for all helping, you know, with these events. And we're gonna rassle Joel into this next year as well. So, anyway, so we've got some PowerPoint information there. And in the packet, what I basically, Jeff worked on the spreadsheets and I worked on the messaging. So what I did was I basically did a page for each event, what it covers, you know, why they are successful events and why we are requesting $20,000 to help us actually do these events. As, as most of you know, I do this for free. I get paid nothing. It's all for the love. But I, but I really believe that these events also benefit things that are near and dear to my heart, which is helping the planet, helping wildlife, preserving wild spaces. So Earth Day certainly falls into that wheelhouse and the Outdoor Festival does as well. We started out, how many years ago? Seven, eight years ago? Yes.
With Movies in the Park, it was seven years ago.
So seven years ago, I was approached by then-manager Michael Sykes to do some kind of an event. He knew that I'd worked in radio, owned radio stations and had done more events than I cared to mention. And so I did. And I reached out to Jeff because he is able to implement so many things so well. And we partnered up and had our first Movies in the Park. And this will be year eight, I believe, of Free Movies in the Park. Movies in the Park, we'll start there because that's where it all started. Thank you very much. I'm moving that PowerPoint presentation up. But Movies in the Park, the whole idea for me was to actually create an event that was free, that had very low cost or free items for families to partake in. I think that, you know, especially for families, it's just so expensive to take your whole family out and try to do something. And so Movies in the Park achieved that goal by being free. We later implemented having 50 cent hot dogs and burgers, which was a big hit. We had to double our price to a dollar. And basically, with that money, we donate all of that to the community club. The community club sets up popcorn and confections and drinks for people to purchase. We have all kinds of fun events that we do, like Pizza Bingo, live music. kinds of fun events that we do, like Pizza Bingo, live music, contests, and people respond to it really well. I think I can speak for Jeff and myself, we really know movies, I actually was a movie critic, freelanced for the Oregonian years ago, and Jeff is really good at movies, so we really try to be very thoughtful about the movies we pick that are really uplifting and fun, and also nostalgic, you know, there are certain movies that just have a cult following, like Galaxy Quest, which was a surprise to me, but, you know, doing that, I think, has really helped in getting a lot of people to show up and participate, and it's a lot of fun and it's free. The other thing we do is we partner with the fantastic Scappus Police Department, who are our grillers, grillers and sendouts for the burgers and hot dogs, and it's also great for the police department because they get that exposure with the community, a very positive, you know, interaction with the community, so that's Movies in the Park, and now we'll go back, thank you so much, Susan, you're so kind, we'll go back down to Earth Day, because Earth Day is the next event that I took on and worked with Jeff on, so Earth Day, obviously, I care deeply about the planet, and, you know, we were fortunate to have Dave, our Public Works Director, really assist in doing cleanup, so for the past two years that I've been working, you know, actually working on doing that event with Jeff, we've had a really great cleanup operation, either in the parks or on Highway 30, the police have also helped with that so that the people that are picking up trash don't get hit by cars, and so that happened, and then we also give away free food, you know, we say, hey, let's give away free hot dogs and burgers, and get people out there and engage, we give away lots of free prizes, the community loves it, they love participating in it, I get free food from Fred Meyer, we get free coffee and drinks from Starbucks, we get free pizza from Full Tano's, and then we get free hot dogs and burgers, and so we basically just give that away, we give it away to volunteers, but we also give it away to the public, and so, once again, it's a, it's a really fun event, and we give away for that event a free electric bike, because, you know, if you're gonna be kind to the planet, what's better than a brand-new electric bike, and so that's been a very popular event, and we're planning on doing pretty much the same layout as we have done in the past two years. It basically starts around 7:00, 7:30, when the volunteers show up with Saul to do the cleanup, and then at 10 o'clock, the, the event starts, we do things like Green Tech Talks, where we have different specialists, we've actually had Counselor Holmes come and speak about recycling, but basically, we have them talk about various things that people can do to, to be more mindful and to recycle and to just be better stewards of the planet, so, and, and this last year, I won an award from PBS National Show called Life in Bloom for some photos that I did, being Mother Nature, and then giving away my flower crown to a little girl, so, that's that. Now let's move on to Scappus Outdoor Fun Festival. So, this event is really, I, I really, really love this event, first off, it's the first of its kind in the country, there are outdoor shows that are about hunting and fishing and all of that, this is the first event that is actually dedicated to outdoor activities for families, camping, hiking, cycling, horseback riding, we had a rock geode booth where you could crack a geode and learn about, you know, rock collecting, we also had the Forestry Department here this year with Smokey the Bear, and got that really great shot with a little girl, and it's, and it was really, really just a really great event, we had closer to 1,000 people show up, and the reason we can, we can show that is that we do between 300 and 400 swag bags that we offer our participants to put in information, including City Scappus, and then we pass them out to families, and if you're not a family, you're an individual, and then, of course, we had our Scappus sauerkraut sandwich back, so, Mr. Bill Blank is here, and they did a great job serving that up, and so, that event, we're planning on actually extending and actually doing Dance on the Wild Side in the evening, but we gave away a tandem kayak, and I just thought it was wonderful, and I, and what's also interesting, too, is that I'm also getting some interest for doing additional publicity, so I reached out to OPB, and Oregon Field Guide is interested in doing a story about the event, but I'm also looking to partner with some other nonprofits, we, we had the Audubon Society, which is the Bird Alliance, which is coming back again this year, but I also, because, you know, for me, it's like, we've seen a 300% increase in people using parks and public spaces throughout the United States, you know, for any of you that have gone to our national parks, you now have to make reservations to get in because so many people are going, and it's great, but a lot of these folks aren't knowledgeable about how to, you know, they're, they're good at consuming in the parks, but we want to have them become stewards and practice, leave no trace, and, and really, you know, have a positive impact on those wild spaces, so, doing that, everything that we have at that event kind of just enhances that, so we had the Oregon Equestrians, they had a big pony that people, it wasn't a real pony, it was a fake pony, but, but people get up and get their picture on it, we had the Cub Scouts doing Lego displays, we had the Forestry Department, we had the Columbia County Marine Patrol talking about water safety, we had the Scappus Fire Department there, you know, talking about wildfire safety, I mean, one of the things I know the Scappus Fire Department is really concerned about, and also interested in educating people about, is learning to make sure at your homes that you're, you've got garden space and you've got plants that are far enough away from your house, that if, if a fire or something does happen, you're, you're not going to have that be a fire hazard, so, I just, I think this event is going to be a really good event, and I'm really excited to do it again this year, and I've reached out to REI, and there's a company called Snow Peak, I don't know how many of you have heard of them, but they're, they're actually a Japanese-based company that creates outdoor gear, but they just recently opened a Snow Peak recreational park in Long Beach, Washington, and as many of you know, a great way to get to Long Beach is to go along Highway 30, so they're really interested in participating as well, so it's, it's kind of having that diversity and lots of things that people can, can learn about, one of the things they're, they're interested in doing is doing like a campfire cooking demonstration, you know, this last year, we had Native American dancing, we had NJ, if you can hear me, NJ, you knocked it out of the park with the campfire storytelling booth, we had a kids' art show, and then we also had a creation station because, you know, sometimes kids need to do stuff the day of, we had the police department there, it was just, it was a great event, so, that's, but, but it costs money, and I spent a lot of time planning this event, and I also work hard to get sponsors and participants, but, you know, the ask for 20,000 is 80,000 less than what the city's spent in the past in doing events, and I think you get a lot more for your money, and Jeff, is there anything you'd like to add?
The 20,000 that's asking for is so we can be assured that kind of most of the hard costs of doing these seven events will be covered, I'm under direction from my board to make sure that that happens before we participate, and it's, last year, it took a lot of time to come up with the money to put these events on, but most of it, we had to solicit from donations. Library budget just can't support this kind of, this kind of event reduction.
I'm curious, I went through the proposal, when I tally everything up, it's 30, 96,000, are you asking?
That's correct.
That's correct, I, I can raise the rest of that money pretty easily, so, and some of that is cash, some of it is in kind, but people, you know, and it's interesting, too, it's like, the Movies in the Park have really, we've really got a great reputation for that now, and companies are happy to participate and give us money.
And the in-kind of the library is, has always supplied is the staffing, one thing I've discovered here is that it's really hard to get volunteers to staff an event, so we have to plan now just to have it with paid staff.
Yeah, Counselor Santiago.
So, question, I know that Jeff, you have come before the council to, in the past, and asked for funding for the particular Movies in the Park, you know, for the library hosting this, is this part of it, are you gonna be asking later on for?
This is everything.
Okay, just.
You or, or that's how we would.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to, you know, because one of the things that I do as far as getting sponsors is that I actually will have, so like, for instance, US Bank, this year is gonna sponsor the Earth Day and the Outdoor Festival, and so, they, and that's how I'm able to monetize or get donations in kind for that event, I mean, you know, and it's, and people are great, I mean, Fred Meyer, every year has given us free cake for everybody for the last night of movie night, which is now, you know, people love it, it's, it's really fun, and they actually go to a lot of trouble to decorate the cake, so, it's just, it's a great event, all, they're all great events.
J.J. and Jeff, we really appreciate you doing this every year, just to, because some of the shenanigans that have happened in other jurisdictions and.
Oh, yes.
Refer back to this recording at a later time, Jeff, if we approve the 20,000, council approves 20,000, that's, the check is being made out, or the funds are transferred to the library.
Library.
You're dispersing the funds to the different vendors that need to be paid, is that?
That's correct.
And we are happy to present, provide you with all receipts.
Thank you, I appreciate that. If that's the case, we're typically a fund, a sponsor, you know, we don't get too involved, yes, we'd like to work with you on what's going on, because it is on city property a part of it, and, and in the past, you have got money through our community enhancement program, not usually more than 1,000, you don't.
Yeah, it's usually 1,000 or less.
And, and that's still there, but Movies in the Park hasn't got any money from that, I don't think, in the past, it's in April, and our program kind of is.
You're talking Earth Days in April.
Earth Day, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And so, that unfortunately is probably before we vote to the next round for this year, you know, you could ask for Earth Day for next year, okay, but appreciate all you've done, it's been great, the, the events have been great, and would like to help, but at the same time, I know Whoville has a meeting this week, and they're talking about what they can do to grow and look for funding, and there, it is, it comes kind of from other angles as well, so we do want to be physically responsible, but at the same time, really do want to support cities, so we need to maybe discuss, is this something we would put together and discuss, or is it something we vote on now, is, if it's, we look at how we fund this, and?
Ultimately, that would be up to the council, I mean, in our, in our budget, we do have it budgeted for 10,000, well, 11,500 total for these events already, so that was something that was already in the budget, so anything above and beyond that, I think is more what they're asking for to bridge that $8,500 gap compared to what we budgeted for, because that was already in the council's agenda to, or their budget to fund that up to 11,500, so, yeah, I mean, we could, the council could take until next council meeting to think about it, if we can bring some additional, whatever you may want to know about that funding, yeah, we did have, I know J.J. had mentioned to me earlier, we did get a little bit extra in our taxes this year, but that is also one-time lump that we got, that was due to the cascade issue, that's not gonna be repetitive thing, so, that would be the question of continual funding, I'm assuming that would be probably the, the ask going forward is 20,000, that's probably gonna get a little bit above that as, as, as costs continue to go up, and what is that funding sustainability or that continuity plan going forward, is that always gonna be city pretty much funding a large portion of that, or are there gonna be other donors, I don't know, that's.
I think, I mean, I think those are fair questions, I mean, I think ultimately, you know, I believe that we'll get more and more participation from sponsors, just because they see value in it, but yeah, it's, it, it's just, it takes, you know, I, I volunteer my time, but my time is, is quite valuable, and I'm very good at this, so it takes quite a bit of time for me to, to, to reach out to people and to, to make all these other fun things happen, as it does for Jeff, I mean, we put in a tremendous amount of time, and we, we do it at a fraction of what you've paid companies to do for one event, so I think it's a very fair ask.
I, I do appreciate, I do want to try to figure out a way to make it work.
I appreciate that, too, because we need the help.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
First, J.J. and Jeff, you do marvelous work, and we, we all, all the community appreciates it, the, we're also, as Mayor alluded to, you know, we're mindful of the taxpayer dollars, so.
Absolutely.
So I'm, I'm looking through the, the budget items here, and I'm thinking, it's like, do we, do we really need to have a medic when we have the fire department across?
Yeah, no, we do, yeah, we do.
The fire department would not supply a medic, so we had to.
Why, why wouldn't they supply a medic?
They don't have.
I understand, on call, you just, you just talk.
I, we, we asked them, they said no, they, they said they'd be happy to show up at our event, but they would not be able to provide a medic for the event, that's what happened.
For insurance purposes, you needed one?
For the permitting purposes, I couldn't get the city permit without having a medic.
That's, well, that's, that's.
I mean, if you want to call them and ask them, that'd be great, we'd love that.
Ben, did you look into that, that seems a little.
It was a fire department that wouldn't sign off.
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely look at, I mean, if it's a fire department, not the city policy, I'm not sure, we'd have to work with the fire department on that, but.
Yeah, but I mean, that just seems odd, it's a community event, I'm just going, whoa, that's a.
I agree.
That's a head-scratcher.
Yeah.
And then, then, you know, again, being mindful of the taxpayer dollars, looking at, at the bags, I hope those aren't plastic bags.
No, they're recycled.
They're actually recycled pop bottle bags.
And so, and, yeah, they are.
We're gonna be creating more landfill stuff.
No, we are not, we are, we are, we are reusing, reusing, reusing.
And the other, the other item I would suggest is that instead of an e-bike, you go to a regular bike for, for a donation, I mean.
You know, I think, and I, I appreciate that, but I think that people love e-bikes, and they're pretty comparable in price, I mean, you know, we get them to, to come down on, on the regular price, it's just, it's a better draw.
I'm thinking of messaging, you know, so on Earth Day in particular, you know, adventure festival would be different, on Earth Day, we're trying to, we're trying to help the planet, and.
Right.
And a bike sends a much better message than an e-bike.
Well, I, I, and I, I hear you, I don't know if I agree with that, I certainly understand that perspective, I think that e-bikes are becoming more and more popular, not only just as a, as a recreational tool, but as a mode of transportation, so we are pretty fortunate in the Scappus area to actually have fairly decent bike lanes along the road, and so there are people that use e-bikes more, I know in Portland, they use them for.
I get that, but I think that's just something, maybe it's something for you guys to chew on.
Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, other than that, but yeah, so I think, you know, if we can kind of fill and fill out some of these holes that might, might be there, that you have more confidence in signing off on a check, and so, so if, if, if we can get, like, the medic resolved from the, from the fire department, and so, instead, instead of medics, we could maybe reduce that to 19,000 or 18,400 or whatever, would that be appropriate?
Absolutely, so are you willing to reach out to them and do that?
I'm, well, I'm thinking a much better messenger there would be Mr. Ben.
All right, great, thank you, Ben.
President Miller? Yeah, Ben, do you know off the top of your head what our budget was that we were, well, actually, our bill was that we were paying Treadway events prior to J.J. taking over some of these events?
I, I don't know, but.
$100,000.
It was the next.
Excess of $100,000.
It was costing the city around, I believe, 100.
That was the whole bill, but it wasn't there.
Yeah, so I just kind of want to put some context behind this, I think the historical context is a bit important to keep in mind here, too.
Well, and also, that was for the Centennial, which was a.
I'm not done yet, I'm just waiting for the side conversations to stop. Anyway, I just want to make sure that everybody here knows that wasn't here, that the reason that you offered to do this was to save the city money, and you did save the city considerable money.
Yeah.
So, I think that $20,000 is a good value, however, I have not heard that Whoville was going to potentially be asking for money, so I don't know what that looks like at all, but, and I'm not asking that we make a decision tonight or anything, but I, I do think the, the context and how much money we did save over the previous years is important to bring up.
I really appreciate that, Tyler, well, and I think, too, I mean, I think the other thing is, is that with, especially like the outdoor events that are so unique, I think it really also creates a great messaging idea for the City of Scappus itself, if people, you know, can identify Scappus as a great place to go to enjoy the outdoors, or a place to go to where you can enjoy the outdoors and, and go to the coast that way, I think that's a really positive message, and so, it was interesting reaching out to Snow Peak, which is a, it's a pretty big company, and them being very interested in participating and, you know, strategically building this massive outdoor recreation area in Long Beach that just opened this year, you know, I, I think they're really mindful of that, and Highway 30 is a great. And Highway 30 is a great way to go to the coast, you know? And when people travel, I, I mean, I, I speak about from my experience, I travel a lot, but I mean, for a lot of people, it's like when you're going on a trip, you know, when you're going on your trip, on your way to the trip, you want to go and stop and do things along the way. And so Highway 30 offers that. Scappus and other communities on the way to the coast offer that. And then when you're, when you're coming home, you just want to head down 26 and get home. So it's really a great way to invite people to come and, and explore our area and Columbia County in general, and I think it's really effective.
So, and you're, you're talking to basically the economic development benefit of these events.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I'm just trying to stress that I think we do get good value out of this. Um, I have no problem tabling it to whatever, you know, my fellow counselors think is appropriate. I just want to be mindful of context that, um, how much money the city has saved and the value and all the benefit that these events have brought to the city.
Yep. Thank you very much and thank you for all your help, Tyler.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, so thank you for all that you do. And this sounds like a conversation, uh, very familiar to the one that we had last year, which is why council had asked for the money to be set aside in the budget to support these future events. So I, I have no problem using that money as it was intended to support these three events, which bring tremendous value to the community. I would like to see kind of with Outdoor Fest, an opportunity to bring people into Scappus to maybe more directly engage with our parks. It is a great one day event, but, um, to use it as a, as a way to kind of like encourage them to go to the different parks or, or build some other activities around that event during that week, um, so that people are able to really build a relationship with Scappus. I think further builds on the economic value that that event could bring. Um, so I guess just given that we did earmark the money to support these events, you know, maybe we don't go the full 20 tonight, but I would be comfortable allocating the 11,500 that this council set aside to support these events in the budget last year.
And reminding too, that there is, you know, when the CEP comes open, they can, you know, I can't speak for that yet because we all vote on where the money goes and how much everybody gets, but there's, there's, I think it's up to $5,000. So there's, there is potential to use some of that budget for these events would qualify because they have in the past. And I do want to say, I haven't heard anything from Whoville about asking for more money, but they're talking about it, about what they're going to do and grow and begin on as a city house there. I'm sure that the city's going to be part of that, so mindful to their ask as well.
Yeah, the other thing, it's interesting, so with Tyler bringing up the city of St. Helens, um, you know, one of the things that really happened with the, with the city of St. Helens, uh, is that when they created Halloween Town and really got that going, and there's a whole backstory about that, that we're not going to go into here, but it really put the city on the map. You know, it was interesting this last October when I, because I ride my bike around Southeast Island every week. And so during pumpkin season, I go early in the morning, so I avoid all the pumpkin killers. But afterwards, I go by the pumpkin patch and grab some food and visit with my friends there. And, um, I was kind of in line waiting to get my order and I'm hearing people talking about, well, okay, we've already done the pumpkin patch, now we've got to go do Halloween Town. And, and I, I see that happening with us with the outdoor festival. It's kind of like, you know, they, thousands and thousands of people go to Southeast Island. I lived out there for 13, 17 years, oh my God. And it's like, if there's a way to, to get them to go to Southeast Island, go pick their produce and say, hey, let's go check out that event in Scappus, you know, where they're doing all this outdoor stuff. I mean, that's really valuable.
I would like to echoing onto, onto Kim's, um, if we could have somehow set up there for having a ride set up for later in the summer, like, okay, on this date and everybody can kind of sign up, get the information and then someone donate, I'm going to show, we're going to ride the trail. And then someone from Northwest Trail Alliance says, we're going to give a free day to ride those, those mountain bike trails.
Yeah.
Or kayak place, we'll set up this day and
I reached out to Next Adventure. I spent a lot of time trying to get Next Adventure to come this, this last year. I'm hoping they'll participate this year. So yeah, I think Kim makes an excellent point. It's like, we need to be able to use that event to promote our parks. So it would be great if city council were able to have a booth and have information about the parks that are available there. If there's promotional things that you want us to talk about during the event or before the event, we can. But you're absolutely right, Ken, because that, we have some really great parks. The, the Crowns Ellerac Trail, I mean, you know, Chapman Landing, you know, the Bird Alliance, the former Audubon Society's already had two bird watchings there. Because, you know, when you go to Southeast Island to watch birds, you're also going with a lot of other bird watchers. And so there's this, this wonderful little spot at Chapman Landing that's pretty unknown. And so it's really highly coveted. The other thing, I was talking to, uh, them last week. So I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Chapman School Swift Watch that happens every year in the Portland area? Well, this year, the Swifts declined dramatically. But what's happened is that in Columbia County, they are, are going into vacant chimneys, um, throughout Columbia County. I have an apartment building, we have an old chimney and the Swifts are now going down there. So now we're getting people watching there and there's a big watching of the Swifts coming out in Rainier. So, I mean, it's kind of like, we have a lot of, of really wonderful treasures with wildlife that we need to let people know about.
Do you have something, Ben?
Oh, I was just going to ask for clarification on your budgeted items. Your librarian, is she sal, he or she salaried or the, is that an hourly?
Salary.
That, that's you that's librarian? Okay, I wasn't sure if that was you as a director, so.
It's the equivalent
That's the in-kind.
Per hour.
That's the in-kind, okay, costs.
Well, I would say let's, um, I know there's time constraints here and you have to get your board to sign off on some of these and they need to see the money, but I think can we talk and see what monies we have available or, or budgets to see where we, I mean, I, I agree with Kim, at least on the 11,500, that's, um, budgeted for, but to go beyond that, I'd have to see who can get that money from.
Right, and that 11,500 should get you started into first events for sure. It's Outdoor Fest coming up in June, you'd need to know that additional money, correct?
Right, the, the expensive event is Outdoor Fest.
I guess we could say the money and then you could use some of it for Earth Day because it wouldn't necessarily qualify for the CEP program this year because it's
Well, the only event that would qualify for CEP is Movies in the Park because everything else is too early. Because you pay the CEP out of next year's budget.
We do it in May, we issue the money in May and you'd have to have
The checks don't come till July.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Are, are we locked into a June Adventure Fest?
I was going to ask what date it is again. Is it June 7th?
It's June 7th and it's
Have we checked on
Are we locked into that because September is a much better month for
I disagree with that. I think, so, and, and let me give you the reason why. So the idea with the outdoor festival is to get people ready for summer and get ready for activities to do in the summer. Um, in September, you know, people are thinking about school, they're not thinking about exploring the outdoors. So I actually did a lot of research on this and June 7th, which is when we'll have it this year, is a really great day for it because it's a week before school lets out. So families are still in town.
Check on that to make sure graduation's May 31st.
Yes, I have. So yes, so June 7th is a great day. So again, graduation and then school's out the week later. So it's just a, it's kind of the sweet spot to do it. Plus, it's also early enough in the season that we'll have a good chance of not having a lot of heat issues that day.
Well, that, that's one of the issues is the weather is much better in September.
Okay.
And then, and then you think about the, for, for those of us who, for those of us who are educators, uh, you know, the, the people are, the teachers and the staff and the schools, you know, everybody's worn out at the end of school. And so the energy level in September is much higher. So, you know, if we're locked into June 7th this year, then that's
Yeah, we are.
Go and look at it at least for this year and see, average temperature 72, the weather was perfect last year.
Yes, it was.
Whereas the September to August ones, we had a lot of smoke and 100 degree days too. So you just never can win here.
Well, but more than that, it is also very relevant to people's behaviors and thoughts. It's like, you know, before school's out, they're thinking about everything they want to do for summer and we give them that little entry way to actually do that.
You have Movies in the Park right up until September 1st.
That's correct.
Right up.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, motion for council to consider that we go ahead and award the 11,500 that we set aside in the budget to, um, give to the library to support at least the first two events to get that started.
A motion by Councilor Holmes to authorize the 11,500 are, um, that we allocated for the events. Any second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Haugen. Any discussion? And all those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Close. What's your theories? To start, I think we will discuss, we have goal setting coming up too. I think these events are important because the other option is we can run them, we can get involved, we can set budgets and, and, or we can sponsor and allow you guys to do it. You've done a great job, so.
Thank you.
Crowd I like, um, involved, but, um, let's look into this a little more.
All right. Thank you so much for your time, you guys. Look forward to working with you on all these events.
Thank you.
Um, hey, now we're discussing on rescheduling or canceling. We have a meeting coming up. Looking at the agenda, I didn't really see anything on the agenda or anything too pressing. We had a request, it's a holiday, it's the day before. Um, this is supposed to be moved to Tuesday. Anybody have any, since to, have anything changed since we last spoke? Um, your, or your thoughts on postponing it versus canceling?
Right, so, um, the request was because I, my parents were actually coming to town and I was like, hey, that'd be nice to, to visit them. Um, and it's after the holiday. So, um, just because we have the council retreat coming within a week or two after that, or really soon after that, um, and there wasn't a lot on the agenda, they asked us if it'd be okay if we either moved or postponed it or canceled. Um, I think preference, just because of the, because of the, a goal setting retreat between the council, but if, if the council wants the whole, that's fine.
My first thing, no problem moving it. And then I, to look at rescheduling, is there really anything pressing? Is there any big 50-year plan? Is there anything for work session or what we need to do that week? And looking ahead, I don't see anything. And even the next month is somewhat a little light at the beginning, so add some. But, so unless somebody has, again, with our other committees, we don't want to meet just to meet, um, of issues to handle, we would definitely do them. But I, I would be for canceling that meeting if anybody, unless anybody else has
Mr. Mayor, um, has a date been set on, on, um, yeah, retreat goal setting?
It's on my question today, there's three potential dates and I want to get a, a feedback from you first before I solidify it.
All right. Yeah, I'm aligned if we're not, nothing to
So I'm, I look to entertain a motion to cancel the 21st meeting.
You don't foresee anything that was discussed today to be discussed?
Nothing time sensitive.
Next meeting will be February 3rd.
Mayor, I move that we cancel
Take a, hold, 21st meeting, any seconds? Back Council Santiago, any discussion? And all those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Close. Harry's, you, and, and I would look, are we going to discuss dates later in your discussion? Um, now we're on to the calendar. We are already on January 6th, so we will, up to, right now, we still have earmarked meetings on January 16th, EDC at noon and Parks and Rec at 6:00 PM. Please check on those before you show up. City offices will be closed January 25th or, uh, or Monday, and we have just canceled January 21st meeting. That, uh, any updates from city manager?
Uh, just to start off with, uh, along the lines of the calendar, as we mentioned, the retreat goal setting is coming up. Three potential dates would be January 25th, February 1st or February 8th. Uh, preference, just because we did cancel 21st, would be either the 25th or the, since we're having a meeting on the 3rd of February to, to February 8th, is probably those two preferences, but we could do, uh, February 1st is another alternative. Uh, just, is there any, do you have any major calendar, or any of the council members that would get in the way of that?
Again, 25th, February 8th.
25th, 1st or 8th.
Personally, do not have any conflicts on any of those dates at this time.
You sort of just give, are we, is this a one day? Is this a weekend? Is this eight hours? Is this four hours? Like, what's this?
Yes.
So is it
It'll be, it'll be, it'll be one day. I'm only planning on one day and
Okay, great.
Um
Eight hours?
Probably just, yeah. Uh, it just depends on how long the council wants to go, but I would plan out the day. We could end early if needed. We're not going to be having a contracted person lead it, so it might go faster.
Two that I've gone to, the ones that we had contracted, the first one was like an all-day event. We did more of a team building exercise as well as goal setting. Next time, we cut out the team building type and it, and it took five hours just goal setting. I would assume it would be very similar to that.
Right, and, and in past, in other cities I've been in, we've done it during council meetings, so a couple hours it could be, especially since we have a lot of our, unless we're really going to stray from our main objectives and goals, if there's any updates to that, it could go a lot quicker. Um, and if, if, if it does, we could also do a trip out to the, um, the wastewater plant so you could see the new NASA space engine we have out there, um, the dryer. But, or we could, and that anyways, just as part of the event, but I, I wouldn't anticipate it being super late thing.
The Tor idea, I mean, we've done it, yeah, going together.
Right, I gotta, I gotta go visit it. I chose to go visit it, I guess I could do it anytime, but, um, yeah, I went to go see it when they were doing some of their loads this last week and it is really cool just to see their setup and, um, to see just how it works and the, the moisture it takes out. So it's, it's unique and, you know, to know that's the only one in Oregon that we have that dryer is pretty unique. So, um, it's kind of newer technology for our state.
Have the LOC Small City being hosted here on the 7th of February. Um, so maybe you can come to that, but I would look at January 25th, um, first to see if, if everybody can make it. You know, we schedule the first one, that way if something doesn't work, then
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, and 25th was my preference and it's pretty much that same week we would have had council anyway, so it's a good, in lieu of council meeting.
Get all the information that you need to run it. I know in the past, they'd call and talk to us each for a half hour, kind of going over some individual things, take those notes there. I don't know if you plan
It, it's open. Uh, I mean, if you really got a lot out of that, I'd be happy to do that as well.
I would rather have us just be able to have an open conversation during rather than,
I think that in the past, I mean, it was with the consultant, some of the things got a little bit, that were said, got a little bit too censored. My experience, I would rather be able to have more open and candid conversations with fellow counselors and staff.
Which is how I've, normally, the way I do them is just, we do a day of open session, we talk about everything. And it's just a candid conversation, a little bit of different format, a different area, so it's a little bit less formal, and we can just talk about everything.
We've, we've all been on council long enough too to kind of know the parameters and guardrails that exist. Or, you know, our positions too, so I think that's a good foundation.
Good to me.
And I guess just if I could ask, how is the department heads coming along with their own goal-setting? Because I think what, what we've also run into the past is that the staff sets goals, and then council has to consider those as our goals. And I think that's where sometimes there's been some rub.
Right, that's not as much how I, I go the reverse. Really, council should be setting a vision for the city. We have our operational goals, and sometimes they'll be part of that. I mean, there's, like, having sustainable infrastructure, that's Public Works' goal, and we want to maybe set some goals on how to keep and maintain that, so that we're always innovative and ahead of the game. But it, these goals should always be a higher level, we figure out as a staff how to accomplish those. And maybe we take it to one more level and say, well, what are some future goals in between there that still high-level, but, you know, not just having a community livability, but what does that mean? Well, we want to really get our parks more, you know, just kind of giving direction. And then I usually take that to staff to come up with how we're going to make those things happen. But like I said, there is some input coming in, we already know some of the big projects are already doing it. You can't take that away, don't want to ignore that and say, hey, by the way, Public Works, we have this whole new billion-dollar project you want to do, because we are dreaming big. Like, there are obviously real constraints, and obviously the council wouldn't do that, but that's the idea. We want to know what's already coming, but really, the council should be setting the vision and the direction, and staff is, how do we make that happen beyond our regular operations?
Good.
Right, well, we'll start with twenty-fifth, that's a good day.
Be a couple of days this week to see if you can get everything ready by then, and.
Right, my only concern is that I'll be off that week prior, so I'll double-check, make sure. But with the format and the way we're looking at it, I'm not, not quite as concerned, because it's going to be a little bit more open conversation as opposed to the structured vision walls and, I don't know, we're going to be looking at what we already had, and what do we want to change, and just really considering having those open conversations.
I check with staff to make sure they all can show, or at least the majority of.
Right, yeah, and that will be the other part. I know on the first, one staff could attend, but they prefer not to, they had other things that they have to cancel. So, yeah, just trying to get an overall feel from the majority of the leadership that will be there, but the twenty-fifth seemed to be a good day, so.
So, just to be, for all of us to be on the same page, what would you need from us walking in the door at this retreat?
You bring your ideas and your vision. Yeah, really. No, we just want to be open, obviously, everybody has their own ideas, and we're working together as a team. In the end, it's the goals of the council as a whole, but there should be no bad ideas. I mean, there could be some crazy ideas, that's fine, but every idea is welcome, because really, it's about what are we going to do to make our city better, our residents.
I agree.
And unless we dream big or dream crazy, sometimes we don't get some of those really great ideas. So, yeah, just be open to anybody's crazy idea they may have, or not crazy idea. Because there are no crazy ideas, there's just all ideas, all good ideas, and we're just going to come in and look at our goals, what do we want to change, update, what successes did we have, and how do you want to pay forward? What are our specific focuses that we want to start chipping away at? There are a lot of them, I mean, just parks itself, there are a lot of direction, we're going to talk about that a little bit later in some of these executive session, about some of those opportunities too, so.
One last request, we could start earlier than nine.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that, so.
Just asking.
Not go past noon? Oh, there is a lunch.
Right. Okay, any other questions about that? Reminder, the 28th is city day at the Capitol. I know that Kim had mentioned she was interested in going, the mayor's going, Jeanette had said she's going, anybody interested in going to the city day at the Capitol?
Twenty-eighth of January.
Right, yeah, it's a Tuesday. You're interested in going to that? Okay, awesome, I'll get you the information for that. Well, have you been to it before, Joel?
Oh, no.
Okay, yeah, it's really cool, if anything, it teaches us how to be better lobbyists for our city. It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to get anything that day, but it's a way to meet our legislators, legislators, our rep or senator. It's a way to learn how the process works, what type of avenues we can go ask for money. They talk about, you know, the short ones and long ones. Get the foot in the door, but I mean, the state reps are pretty slammed that day, obviously meeting everybody, so. Short meetings, but it is a good way to start building that relationship, so.
Last year I went, or was it, last time, the first half, you're listening to the mayor or governor speaks a little, rep from the Democrats speak a little about what they're looking to try to accomplish, the Republicans do the same. Maybe LOC speaks, or some guest speaker, so you're just in a big room for first half of the day, and then you start to try to meet with your legislators in the second half.
That's not such a big idea.
Do we need to personally register, or can the city register us?
Susan will coordinate that, she's good at that, I think. You okay with that, Susan? We, we can, we'll figure it out.
Three-sixth is the deadline for registering?
Day?
And just to.
Eight o'clock, we missed it by fifteen minutes, sorry.
Kim, just to let you know, because there's a breakfast in the morning, I think it starts at nine, but the Women's Caucus is meeting seven fifteen to nine. You show up a little bit earlier than just to be with the Women's Caucus.
Yeah, I think it'll be a great preliminary discussion, you know, is that a realm we want to go into a little bit deeper? How do we lobby a little bit better? I mean, we had a lot of great success with having, I'm just blanking names, but Betsy Johnson, yeah, thank you, in the area, and she's still a great resource, but, you know, going forward, how do we tap into those resources? And even beyond our own reps, how do we do that? Other cities have even got their own lobby firms or many venture versions of that. So there's a lot of different options we can do to always keep our priorities going and see if we can get some funding or policies that affect our city passed. So it is, it is good, I've seen a lot of great success and reason to be a part of that process. The last update for tonight, so we can keep moving on, and you did get an email today, but just wanted to formally recognize that. We did some additional restructuring, and I did, so promoted NJ. So he's doing a hybrid position, he's not fully taken over what Isaac was doing. He's now a city planner, not just associate planner, and he's assistant to the city manager. Him and some of the duties Isaac did will be split between him, Susan, Kathleen, and Carol. Kathleen, Carol, and Susan have already been doing a great job doing, covering that a lot, so NJ's going to help relieve some of that burden on them. But also NJ has a lot of great experience, we're looking at his Parks and Recreation background. You had mentioned what he's already done at the Outdoor Fest, he has a really good background to help, I guess, supplement my, my really enjoyment of Parks and Recreation too. So I think together, we'd be able to help move recreation program and parks programs further, in addition to other things as well. So it's a great career move for him to be able to go toward his goal, he'd love to be a city manager one day, he's done a great job in his current position. It's a great way to consolidate what we currently have, and then it also opens up a part-time position that we can do for a city clerk. So it really just takes everything we have and provides more resources, but for less money. So it's pretty exciting, and the staff are pretty excited about it too, so.
Congratulations, NJ.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Thank you all, excited to get started.
January twenty-second.
And once again, thank you, Susan, Kathleen, and Carol, and all the staff in general, but they, they really have been putting up a lot for the last, however, long since Isaac was gone, they've taken all those responsibilities upon themselves, so. Thank you as well, Susan and Kathleen and Carol. And that's all I have for my updates.
Great, thank you.
Good afternoon, first of all, congratulations, Sarah, for ending on mayor and also counselors for that. Police Department, just a couple of things, so right now, we're going through the process of having two sergeants coming to our police department, go through the background investigation portion. So that's going on right now as well. And the next couple of weeks, we'll be going, opening up interviews for two patrol positions that we have vacant right now as well. And this week, we are actually hosting conduction training for all our Clemmer County law enforcement officers of her room and building training. Pretty good procedure there for that. And we'll be hosting that, and that'll be starting on Wednesday. Just going back to public comment real quick too, just want to say, please transparency. If anybody has any questions, just let me know. I have no problem talking, well, contact with her, I won't go into details, a lot of layers in that investigation, a lot of different parties involved with different things, but please be transparent. Sages, I can call her for coming out here, we're public servants, and what she can talk about and offer to talk to her, and she's, I'm all for still standing. Questions, please let the city manager or myself know, they talk about. Oh, with that being said, that's what I have right now for the police department, so I'm in, any questions?
Yes.
So, this isn't, just in general, I, first, when it was mentioned, I don't know what the term was, but that reminded me of, that I've been seeing or hearing, even on shows, that it's a thing, and SWAT, SWAT.
Yes.
Yeah, and so I think that because it's on social media, it's on, it's in TV, and it's, there's something that I am really curious on how, how we as a small city, even though it's, we're small, but it's still going to affect what's going on in the world. How that's, that's terrible, first of all, and that takes time, that affects the families, that affects our community, that affects the, your time as a, you know, the police officers. So I'm not sure what everybody else is doing across the country with this issue. But it'd be interesting to know, just to be educated on, on, on that, that topic, if you don't mind.
No problem, so generally speaking, SWAT is a term where there is a false report that a person's about to commit an immediate act of violence, that's going to happen, and requires, there's still SWAT team in Clemmer County, first of all. And you have officers responding to a home with, still with that. I can tell you since I've been here, there's, Winston with Skapu Police Department, to include myself, of that happening. As I'm aware of, where we're executing and knocking down doors and things like. There are threats that come out there, but for us as the police department and my officers, we do our due diligence. A lot of times work with the schools too as well, see if there's any legitimacy before we. Think the benefit of working here, and I, my partners in the school district, we have a pretty good relationship. So if there are things we do, we try to submit those assessments beforehand. I can say that's how I've done it since I've been here, which I'm interested as well. And going back to that, I've been talking with, just recently too, with district possibly looking at SRO, which I think will help. A lot of things start within the school, it's getting involved, holds up. It's a law enforcement. The answer is a little bit for.
Thank you, yeah, it's just, you know, wondering how everyone else is doing, dealing with it. Right, so if you know more, just feel free to data.
Will do.
You.
No problem.
Just, just a quick comment for the council's benefit, you, you're doing interviews for your patrol, how many applications are you up to?
We have, I think, six or seven?
Seven, and there's one lateral potential?
Correct.
One lateral potential, so.
State of Utah.
And you are in the works of two sergeants?
Right.
Background check?
Correct, Mayor.
We could very possibly be fully staffed pretty soon, depending on those interviews come up.
Yeah, thank you, if you have any questions, I have no problem answering, being transparent, to tell you. Any situation, I will gladly do so, nothing else.
When my kid got locked out of his car, you were the first person I texted.
Rivalage, rivalage.
I, I know, thank you.
I forgot to ask why we were at the county dinner, I waited till I got into the parking lot, before I thought to call you, but.
No, I don't break into cars, man.
Okay, well, Council Haugen, first day, welcome, this is how the council runs, hopefully pick it up. Good, if you have any, anything you'd like to add?
Well, you know, it's, it's really good to be back at this particular juncture. We, we have an absolutely terrific city council and mayor. We have a spectacular city manager, double thumbs up on our acting police chief, the staff is incredible. Even Judge Todd is still here, who's, I don't know if you realize that, but he's also a musician. And our amazing citizens, you know, Bill Blank, who's, who's been here for decades in service into the community, JJ and Jeff, our librarian, what an amazing time to be part of this. So I feel really good about that, and it's good to be back. Other than that, you know, I'm ready for the new year.
Thank you. For Jacobs?
You know, what Councilor Haugen said, in a good place as a council with staff as well. There's a lot of positive momentum, really good energy, saw that come to life at the holiday party. That was so much fun. It was amazing to just see that energy and togetherness. So, thank you, everyone. Looking forward to the 2025, so.
Thank you. Council Holmes?
Yeah, just congratulations to my fellow counselors and mayor for looking forward to a nice next two years that I'll be serving with all of you, so looking forward to that. And thank you for city manager Burgener organizing the visit down to Salem, so we have kind of a cohesive and succinct message when we meet with lawmakers, so we can really kind of showcase what makes Skapu special, that's on their radar, and let them understand what our priorities are, so, for the coordination.
Thank you. For Santiago?
It'll cross the whole. I also want to say, again, congratulations, NJ. And then, you know, Ben, thank you for thinking outside the box, for being, I know that I've, so far, you've exceeded all my expectations, so great. Chris, Chief, thank you for all your hard work, and as you guys both know, that our staff, we already knew that, they're amazing. So thank you guys for, I know Susan's here, but for all the rest of staff are just taking on that extra work. And happy new year, everyone.
Thank you much. President Miller?
Thank you, everybody that voted for me, I am excited to, and those that didn't, I will prove you wrong. I'm determined, I'm looking forward to a great 2025. I think that the city of Skapu is on a really good track, both with council and staff, so I'm super excited to see what the next four years brings. Congratulations, Joel and Marissa, I look forward to working with all the council. I think we have a really good A-team here, and looking forward to doing really great things for the city. As far as my liaison position with county commissioners, going to those meetings and relaying information back that's pertinent to the city or that could impact the city. The county hasn't had any meetings, I think, since our last city council meeting, just due to the holiday schedule, and their own holiday parties as well, so I don't have anything to report on that. Anyway, looking forward to a great 2025, thank you.
Brings up point two, usually about this time, we look at all the liaisons, whether we need to change, add, track, or maybe that's something we talked about in goal-setting a little bit, where everybody can best use your skill set forward. Thank, again, I wanted, I did want to thank Whoville, it was another great season, they sit over five thousand people, I know it was on the different newses several different times, appreciate that. And they are going to meet Thursday at 5:30, to kind of discuss next year, where they want to go from here, and probably be at that. Again, County-City Dinner, February 4th in St. Helens. Elks, if you want to go sign up for that, Small City, we'll host that here, February 7th, in the council chambers probably, it's usually kind of noon, one o'clock that day, lunch. And Nate Steis from Regional Solutions, just if you're interested, on March 6th, he'd like to meet. He's planning on bringing Business Oregon, DEQ, ODOT, DLCD, Coal Pack, et cetera, to learn more about our projects and our priorities. So I'll get that invite out to everybody, but it's from like 10:00 to noon, March 6th is what he asks, so. We'll, we'll again, get together and come up with something, so when we do meet with them, hit them with our best shot. Works off, you know, in the governor's office. That's all I have for tonight, thanks again for a great year, two years, looking forward to another two, ten? Ten?
Ten?
I don't remember that. And.
Four years, Mayor?
Yeah. Okay, so now we are going to end our session, we are going to go into executive session. Oh, we, purpose of ORS 192.660, dash two dash E for real property transaction. Representatives, news media, and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced, and no decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. I don't anticipate any decision after this, but we will come back out and adjourn the meeting afterwards, but.